I will call the meeting to order if we can stand up to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment?
That's me.
If you could come up to the podium and just state your name.
Gary Anderson.
Chair of the board. I'm here about a drainage issue.
Oh, okay, um, do you want to call Doug then?
Yeah, this'll be what I emailed all you guys.
Yeah, okay, I'm just putting that together.
Hey Doug, if you wanna come up here, um, in the boardroom. Alright, thanks.
Do we wanna wait for Doug for here? We might as well. That way, that way you don't have to say the story twice.
Might, might save you from repeating it.
Yep, that's fine.
Did the videos come through for you guys?
I need to see a video.
I have a video, I have some pictures.
I got a video here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got a video here.
One culvert one, right?
Yup.
Well, he wasn't there last night.
Pretty young walker.
Yeah.
And we've been dealing with it for about four or five years.
Okay, this is in Sway City?
Yeah.
Oh, that's across from Emmanuel there.
Right.
Okay.
And what's wrong?
The, uh, well, multiple things are wrong, yeah.
Alright, go, go ahead and tell your story now.
Okay, well, it's been about four or five years we've been dealing with this problem. And I can't get an answer from anybody about this whose fault it is. But I live on the, my property's on the corner of Second Avenue and P thirty. Okay, so, there's multiple problems. The first one is, um, the culvert on the west side of P thirty, which is in the apron, I think it's twenty-one or twenty-five feet off of the zipper. So, it's within the county's right-of-way, correct? What are you guys, thirty-one feet from the center, or what are ya?
I don't know what the, I, you're Gary Anderson.
Yeah, weren't you, didn't I talk to you that day?
And you're from Sway City and you're talking about drainage?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I just walked in, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody. So, yes, there's, the road is wa- uh, probably sixty-six foot wide road. I'm making the assumption, it's part of this Sway City street system, the, the, it's a farm-to-market extension road, so, the jurisdiction lies within Kusut County for the transportation part of it, um.
So, who is responsible for the culvert being plugged up?
My understanding is that that is not plugged. The city of Sway City has run, uh, something through there and said it was not plugged. I was gonna go up there sometime.
It's plugged, you were there and looked at it. Didn't I talk to you, didn't you drive the road?
Yeah, but, I mean, it's open on both ends.
The water can't get through it.
Okay, well, I, I.
Here, here's the thing, okay? Alright, I'm really familiar with this.
Yeah, I know.
My family has owned that property since nineteen seventy where I'm at, okay? And, you know, it's, the ditch is silted in over the years, you know? If you look at, if you go up there, like I sent, I sent Kyle a bunch of videos yesterday, I walked in, you can see it. Look, and it's a multifaceted problem. Okay, so, we'll start at the top end. Up in the park, there used to be an inlet in the park, okay? On the west side, about forty feet off of the sidewalk, okay? The reason I know all this is, one, I've been around here forever. When I was a kid in high school, I worked for the city. I've been in every frickin' manhole and culvert in that town, you know, years ago. So, anyway, the city shut that one off, you know, how dumb can you be? And then on the other side of P thirty, on the corner there, that outlet is plugged up too. So, all that water from Highway nine comes barreling down that hill. And then, um, you know, P thirty has been built up over the years, it's been overlaid how many times, so there's a pretty good crown on it. So, the water on the west side goes down past that driveway, and then that ditch is silted in there over the years, and that's just, it happens, you know? So, then the water crosses over the road, cause it backs up, cause it can't get through that first culvert. The next ones, on the next street, on the south side of the church, they're all open. And going under P thirty is open out into that field, the dals. So, then all that water comes across to my side and goes around the corner there, okay? Well, the problem isn't so much for me as it is for the neighbor. But I built that house there in two thousand nine, okay? That used to be a, a low spot field, okay? So, I put a house in there and then I put eighty-eight semi-loads of dirt in there, so that raised up the field. So, the problem is, there's a little intake there with a four-inch, it's, it's got a twelve-inch, ten or twelve-inch pipe, but it goes a four-inch into the, into the drain system, okay? So, all the water goes across the street into the neighbor's crawl space, his yard and his garage, okay? Now, the city says they're going to put an intake on that corner, but the other day when I took the video, which Kyle and all of you have, um, I cornered the mayor and I said, hey, are you guys gonna put an intake in there or not? She said, well, I don't know. I said, well, I need to frickin' know. Because if not, I'm gonna have to make a swale or put a tile across my property, which I talked to you about the day you were up there and you informed me not to get in the right-of-way of the county, and I said I wouldn't. You know, but nobody has, everybody's passed around the buck about this damn culvert underneath the road. I mean, you can, it's open on both ends, okay? But the water does not go through it, you know? We can throw a three-inch trash, I was out there and fired the pump and showed ya. You know, it's been plugged for years, it's just silted in. What needs to be done, it needs to be cleaned out or replaced. And that ditch actually needs to be cleaned out somewhat, so the water doesn't skip over P thirty and end up on the other side of the road anyway. Because the main drainage for that area town is on the west side of P thirty, as you can see by all the pipes. I mean, there's the road that goes in front of the apartments, it's on the south side, that's, um, I think that's third of the church. There's one pipe going underneath there, okay? And then it goes over to the south side by the apartments. And then there's two pipes going under P thirty there to drain it all out into that field there. You know, so my question is, like I said, for four years, I don't get any answers. Who's in charge, who's gonna clean this pipe out? You know, I've talked to your office, I don't know how many times, I talked to the secretary, she puts me on hold, she talks to you, then she comes back and nobody still is telling me who owns this darn pipe and who's gonna clean it out. You know, I paid twenty-two hundred dollars a year taxes on that frickin' lot, on that whole block. Clean it out, man, it's simple. You know, you got, you got all these county guys, oh, there's pride right there, you drive by that damn thing every day. You know what I'm talking about.
As long, I've lived there probably more years than you have.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I moved away in nineteen seventy-nine, but my family bought that property in seventy-four, so. You know, um, you know where it's at?
I don't know which culvert you're talking about.
Okay, okay, you know where the old welding shop is?
Yup.
Right across the street, the one that goes north and south. It's steel on one end, cause it's been added onto, and it's concrete on the other end. Right where the mailboxes are, where Denny's mailbox and all those people on that street.
On the west side?
Yeah. That, the lady across the street from us was out there taking pictures of it the other night too, because it was so plugged up that the water was running down onto the city street in front of the church where that low area is there. You know, and you know as well as I do, the city's not gonna give me any, you know, problems I've had with them, I'm pushing them. Um, we aren't gonna get anywhere. So, if it's within the county's right-of-way, which, you know, twenty-five feet off the zipper, you said you're sixty-six feet, so half of that is thirty-three, right?
The, when the law was written, it was, the law was written that the transportation portion, it wasn't the water lines.
So, who's in charge of the, of the pipe? You or them, that's all I need to know.
Sway City.
Okay.
I'm working with Sway City, I've talked with the, the maintenance man and I've talked with the mayor.
So, you might as well talk to my shoe.
Pardon me?
You might as well talk to my shoe, as talk to those people.
Maybe you need to show a little bit of respect for some of the people.
Gary, I think, or, I mean, just, just so we keep things respectful here, but, um, you're wanting to know who's, who's in charge?
Yeah.
Doug, you're looking into it further?
I am, look, I have visited with them and I know where the location is. I can't help that Sway City in that area, right to the north of Sway City, received six inches of rain.
Right.
And I think it's the third rainfall event over three inches in the last month.
Right.
That, that's difficult for.
I understand that.
Draines to operate, and you gotta give something some time.
I understand all.
I mean, I'm sure ninety loads of fill in a low spot may affect some drainage as well.
Right.
Cause you took, you filled in an area that used to pond.
Right.
And now that volume of water is no longer able to pond anywhere but where everything's backed up. I mean, there, there's, there's other circumstances that probably contribute to some of these.
A lot of circumstances. Here's another thing too, that drain.
And everybody that is contributing to that should take some responsibility.
Well, that's what I've been trying to find out, like I said. I've just getting run around and jerked around for how many years, you know? Finally, what'd it take here, we sat here less than five minutes. You finally said who's in charge, so I know where to go, you know? That's all I needed. It's their problem, they gotta fix it, so I'm done wasting your time.
And I am assisting them, visiting with them, and I told them that if the county can help them out, we will, so.
Okay, well, I know where to go from here then. Well, that wasn't so hard.
Okay, well, if you've gotten your answer you were looking for, then?
Yeah, that's all I needed.
There's a lot of ambiguity in that law. And every county, in every city, that has a population of less than five hundred is struggling with a lot of things, because the state legislators wrote a law that did not completely.
Well, the city's.
They, they had good intentions, but they created a lot of problems as well.
The city's gonna have to do some work, you know? I know they don't have the money to work on the storm sewer system. I mean, they got this lagoon project, you know, that is, that's gotta be done, you know? What was her comment on that? So, now it's over five million dollars and part of the price increase has to do with the tariffs. Wow, can't believe she's so stupid, or she is.
Gary, Gary, we're, we're, we're getting off from county business here, so.
Anyway, um.
Uh, if, if you've got your answer, we're gonna move on to the meeting.
We're done, thanks.
Thank you.
That's good.
Did you just hear what he said?
I didn't hear that.
That shows you what kind of respect this person has for leadership. He called, I think he was calling everyone in this room assholes, just as he is leaving, so.
Okay. So, yeah, we're gonna.
Tyler's got something.
Oh, oh, you got a public comment, Tyler?
Uh, yeah, just wanted to stop by, inform everyone that, uh, Raisel Excavating had called me about, they received that final pay application on drainage district sixty sub four. The one that had some additional damages held from the retainage. They had essentially requested that I facilitate a, they'd like a conversation with the board as the trustees for the district over that withholding of damages. Um, and, uh, so I let them know I bring it to everyone's attention and have a conversation about getting, cause the last thing I want is for just whoever speaks last to speak the loudest and be heard on that issue, so. My thought is that, and I know just public comment, no actions to be made, but, um, getting, if they want to have that conversation, it's going to need to be something that's in a public forum with landowners present and available for those conversations, so. That's all I have.
Alright, alright, thanks Tyler.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. I, I'll give you that white land stuff too, that, it's, it's actually, it's a Doug's Unlimited, not, uh, not anything that weird or so. But I still have the info, so.
Alright, good, thank you.
Thanks all.
Happy with them, yep. Okay, any more public comment? Seeing on, uh, take a motion for the agenda minutes. Motion by Hawes.
Second.
Second by Stacker. Discussion on the agenda minutes. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you oppose, motion carried. Monthly update from the secondary road foreman. Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
How are things going?
Good. Busy right now.
I'm sure, sure.
We are, uh, the road department is down on B sixty-eight. Filling in driveways, crossroads, a research and job.
Started it this morning, so it'll take a couple days to get that knocked out.
Yeah, I know, up north, we're hauling a lot of gravel to some areas clear up in the northeast corner.
Yup, I know.
So, um, trying to get some gravel on it, it's up there.
Doing some blading.
Overall, I think the road's in really good shape with gravel for the most part.
Yeah, what I've been on, I think, I mean, the rains, uh, consistent rains have been helping for getting out and blading.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah. You guys get any questions? Okay, well, we can go to retirement recognition if we're ready.
Carter, this is a certificate of apprec- appreciation from the board of supervisors. Somebody, if you feel, I'm ready to see what's here. Yeah, this is Lynn Stevens. Lynn has been working for us. October of two thousand eighteen was that when things started, Lynn, and, uh, worked for seven years now, decided to retire. I thought maybe this morning that he had changed his mind, was gonna come in and sign the word down in a few years. That was not possible. But, uh, Lynn maintained, uh, gravel roads, kinda Cresco township, down to the south and west of Algonah, worked out of the Algonah shop, and done a very, very good job, caught on well. Very good worker, and we appreciate everything that you've done, Lynn. And we certainly wish you and Mary a very happy retirement. I hope she's happy that you're retiring too. But, uh, on behalf of the secondary road department, I'd just like to say thank you very much. And this is just in appreciation.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, and could I get a photograph with you as well, please? Thank you.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three.
There you go.
Three.
Just give me a call when you guys are ready.
Sounds good. Have a great day.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, cause I got put on at nine, okay. Yeah.
He's after nine too, you can't move him up.
Yeah.
If it, yeah.
That's why we try to finagle sometimes, but this time.
Well. Can take a forty-minute break, so, uh.
Says Carter never.
So, this, uh, we're still, but what, what's going on there? It's just the city doesn't have the time or resources to take care of it?
I don't know, from the sounds of it, they've been battling over it for years and we hasn't got an answer of whose responsibility it actually is. Each one seems to be pointing the finger back at the other, so. While I don't appreciate the comments at the end, I think.
I didn't hear the comment at the end, I missed it, but.
Yeah, but the one thing he said, he just needed an answer of whose responsibility it was, and he's asked both parties and then he pointing at the other one, so. I guess, hopefully something will be resolved there. Doesn't sound like that house is needed, but. And I mean, yes, there's been a lot of rain in that area, but if there's a functional filter, I don't think the amounts of drainage we've gotten are that extreme that there should be ponds for days on end if, if they're within the capability of going through a culvert. Obviously, you're not gonna move water that's below the level of the culvert, but.
What was the deal with, there used to be a pond and you filled it in, or what?
He built a house on the corner and that's where the low spot used to be.
Oh.
And he raised it all up.
Yeah, when, when he, when he built the new house, he put more dirt in so that it wasn't in as much.
Okay.
So, that's why it's not affecting him, him as much as it's affecting his neighbor, cause it's going under their house.
But then there's gonna be more water flowing, now it's running now too, right?
Yeah.
It's gonna go somewhere.
Well, I don't know. I don't know. There's been times it hasn't.
I don't know, I mean, you can definitely tell in Sway City and other places, I mean, we don't have a typical ditch like you, when you would have X number of years ago. And in some places, maybe that's okay, some places, maybe it's not, but. It's just the way it is now.
I'm speaking from experience, when you wanna mow it, you don't want the ditch, when you want the water to get away, you do.
Very true.
Yeah.
So, what happened with the discussion of what Tyler brought in? Just like back and forth and come to an agreement, or?
I don't know, I think, I mean, Tyler touched on about having landowners in here as well. If we're gonna have any sort of discussion, I think we need to send out notices and do another public hearing. They were all here for that, or the ones that were, the ones that showed up were, but. I don't know, I guess we withheld retainage for other projects in the near history and having gone back and reevaluated those, so. This would be a new situation in the, in the aspect of reevaluating it. We have withheld from retainage for things that were not completed. And damage that was caused because of it, so.
So, who will make the decision again?
We do.
But when are we gonna make that decision?
We'll have to schedule something.
Yes, you know, we can't, we can't even talk about it.
I mean, it was like public discussion today, we can talk about it briefly, but like, reptiles aren't in here, landowners aren't in here.
So, are you gonna go that far? You, you said you've never done it before. When are you gonna, when are you gonna decide, when are you gonna decide, when are we gonna decide how far we're gonna go?
That would be if we put something on the agenda to set a date for a hearing. That would probably be part of the conversation there, I suppose.
I'm asking the same question three times. If you're gonna have a hearing, you're gonna have everybody here, and, and then you've already, then by that point, you've decided you're gonna do some, you're gonna hold the hearing. Are, are you gonna hold the hearing, that's the question? Or you have it in the past, you said?
We've never reevaluated anything after the completion hearing. Um, that would be up to the board as a whole if we wanted to have a hearing and discuss it or not, or if we don't want to have any conversation about it, I guess.
I can't remember right off the top how much were the damages that were.
The increase, yeah, the increase in, yeah, withholding was probably ten to fifteen somewhere in there. I didn't, I don't have the exact, but yeah, it was, it was in that ballpark.
It will be a pleasant exchange amongst everybody.
For sentence?
It costs the district more money than this is. I'm not saying that's a huge amount, but it does cost the district more money.
So, when does, like, I, I think I asked this room, when does someone would fall to the engineer to make sure things are done right?
Well, I know there were things communicated to them on multiple occasions that things were not completed. Um, and when we extended the completion hearing, more communication was given to them for final list items.
Them being the engineer.
The engineer gave to the contractor.
Okay, so we think the engineer has absolved from the problem?
I mean, I'm not saying that, that there couldn't have been more handholding done, but I also don't think that's their job to be a babysitter.
They do get paid to get the job done, or a mantra of the job.
They get paid to oversee that it's done and, and he stood here and said. In, and in, in general, I mean, we gotta remember that when you look at the project on a grand scheme, like, quality of the install and stuff, the very high majority of it was installed with inspects and past televised and all that. So, functionally, in general, I would still say it's a good project, they just didn't finish some of the client cleanup work. And it, it leaves a bad taste in everybody's mouth, but it doesn't mean the project was terrible. But also, what we're withholding is not a major piece of a three-million-dollar project either. But, I mean, when we had the discussion for that completion hearing, there was pretty, pretty clear sentiment from landowners that they were not happy with how things were done. So, I guess, the engineer has some oversight into that, but.
Well, if he didn't, if they asked him to do it, and they didn't do it.
Yeah, I mean. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't lead him to water. And in all reality, it's no different, like, another one that's fresh in memory is D D Moore with McCarthy. We withheld stuff from retainage and there was leveling on a couple sections that Raisels came in and did the leveling afterwards to fix stuff that wasn't done. Raisels sent a bill and the bill we paid was taken out of their retainage, so.
The other ones we changed.
Yup, so, in all reality, that's basically the last straw that we have as lovers to say you didn't do the job the way it was supposed to be done.
I don't wanna, I'm really not trying to put you on the spot, I apologize on that. But so, if it comes down to Raisels being here and the, and the engineer being here and the, and the landowners being here, I, you, you saw what they were talking about, so who's, who's gonna, where's it gonna end, I guess?
I mean, I'm not aware of any argument for either side that would change my opinion at this point. I think, to some degree, even, I mean, there's, there's a lot of pieces to it, there's a lot of ways you could look at it, but like even sending a bill to a landowner for reconnecting a tile that was part of this project and having to argue with them over it, like, that should've never happened. And, I, I, I don't know if it's just that the message needs to be sent that this wasn't. I, I don't know if it's just that the message needs to be sent that this wasn't the quality of job that we expect or what, but I think. I think there's a level of that that is our responsibility as trustees, because. If the landowners that are paying the bill aren't happy for it, why would we have to, if it's, if it's reasonable issues and concerns, I mean. Not just somebody hated the project from the beginning and they're never gonna be able to get with a perfect job, that's. That's things that we obviously should explore and deem as justifiable, but if it's for legitimate issues that. A reasonable person could have avoided, then, yeah.
So is it, again, I'm not trying to, and I know both cameras running and everything, but, so have all the others covered up now, or?
We did not make pretend.
Farmers went out there, did their work, I'm not saying, I, I didn't see it, so I don't know what I'm gonna contribute to the. To the discussion or anything, and I don't want to see every project either, I think somebody's word for it.
Well. I mean, the landowners that live there are the ones that I could put most stake in, but also.
Yeah.
I mean, Tyler didn't sugarcoat anything, these have been issues that have been conveyed multiple times and it wasn't done, so. When you have the facts on the table, I mean, if they don't want to take another name, you should do a better job than that, but.
Yeah, I don't understand, so it's gonna take. Are you willing to have that conversation with them?
I mean, I am, but I could have that conversation with them one-on-one and I don't know if it's gonna. Change anything that's already, that hadn't already been said.
I agree, well, I don't even know if six-on-one is gonna change anything, so.
Well, I would hope it does, but, I mean, that's, that's not up to me, if. If we feel as bored that we wanna set a hearing and talk about it, we can talk about it, if we think it's a waste of time and a waste of money notifying people. We can make that decision as well, but. When Tyler called me about it, asked and suggested and come in and just informed the board and stuff, since we had. I figured we have quite a bit of time here this morning, so.
I was gonna be surprised, I'm gonna use the number thirteen thousand, I don't know if it's accurate either, but. I was gonna be surprised if they just laid over and, and accepted that when, when that came by, I mean, but.
I don't remember how much McCarty's was, but I was, I bet it was over that, um.
And again, that's where Rais- Raisle went in and fixed what they shouldn't have done.
Yeah, and Raisle, Raisle wasn't the only one that fixed stuff, but they did parts of it, yeah. Some of the landowners, some of the landowners did, um.
So what's gonna be the next step, just for us to make a decision what we wanna do?
I know, I know when I talked to Tyler, he said he was planning to suggest to them that they write a letter or something to the board, so. I'll probably have follow-up conversations with Rais- or with Tyler and potentially Raisles as well, but, um. See what they have for plans for next steps or whatever.
Okay, I'll leave it alone, sorry.
No, you're fine, we're good. We've got all kinds of time.
I'm gonna walk down treasures off and see about a license, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure I can find a couple of things to do.
How's Molly?
I'm good, how are you?
Not too bad.
Interesting day so far.
Oh, isn't it always? Isn't it always?
It is usually a... We'll fight you.
Hello?
How's it going?
Good.
You gonna be ready by then?
I heard it.
Jumped out.
Everybody on the video here just...
Don't even feel it coming.
Oh, we got it.
Oh, it does get warm back there.
Yeah, don't tell Derek that. He already knows. It is just not signed from last minute.
Oh, yes, yeah, from May thirty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it must, it got missed or something for getting signed and... Next brought it over.
Must be Carter's fault we didn't sign it.
Mm-hmm, probably.
Where is D P eighty?
Went and down, went to turn.
That's a big one. And it's north of the bank, cropped all the way over towards Light Yard, look over there.
This section...
Did our name...
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, that's second new township.
Yeah, it is.
Why?
Yeah.
Cause that's the chairman.
I don't know if I just said it short that way, but it should've.
And mine is like in front of time.
Should've had sections twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Does it bother you, Josh? It is in front of you.
Why?
Josh is me.
Our, our name thing, cause then mine got pushed over, so it's kind of in front of you.
Yeah.
But Derek changed it.
Derek did, he was my...
Only the first thing I'm looking for today.
So it'd be twenty-eight, twenty-nine of Light Yard Township.
It's always so cold in here.
What's going on there? There you guys.
You're serious? It's gotta be like six degrees warmer in our office.
At least, if not close to seven.
Yeah, it's... I don't know how you can put that on, I would be sweating bullets.
I did look at this last night, but even on here, it doesn't say which township it is.
Well, this is a project we've been talking about for about three, three and a half years and... So I guess I kinda just know where it's at, but yeah, we should've had that clarified a little bit better. And I kinda screamed over it, but I, originally, but I should've, should've probably had a lot more detail on there.
So in here, it's like there's this open ditch.
Which one are you looking at? So...
Here's... So is this where they're headed?
Yeah, so there's, and actually, it's a lot easier to see on the drainage mask, so, well, I say easy for me, but like here's twenty-nine. And there you can see Roth and Sioux, so the strain, which is lots of seventy.
It's a tile.
Yep, that's a tile that goes to the open ditch, so...
So there's nothing, you can't tell by looking whether it's an open ditch or not. Other than you can physically see it there.
Yeah, I mean, it says main open ditch up there, so, and there are labels in different places, but they bounce around, but there'd be the tile. And then on this side, which is lateral ten, comes from the ditch here and goes right up through the part of their farm.
So it's two different tiles.
Two different tiles, yeah. They own sort of three, this one comes from the north, but we've done a lot of investigating on that and they feel like it's okay for now, so... Yeah, they're, they're looking for both tiles to be improved.
So it... Well, it doesn't matter, it says southeast, two miles northwest, it certainly has two miles northwest.
And no, it's not too, it, well... Yeah, I mean, the tile itself is about two miles by the time you get to the bottom end of lot seventy.
Okay.
But, um, their farm up to the ditch is not two miles.
Yeah, I understand.
They're saying section twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Yep, of Light Yard.
Yeah, what's in twenty-eight?
The tile goes a different direction.
Yeah.
Go a different ditch.
They, they go opposite directions, one goes north and one goes east.
They have a guy that wrote good, but they're far.
There's two different farm, I mean, they're, they own pieces on both sides of the road.
Oh, that's the Roth. The Sioux, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Okay.
Thanks.
So kind of hobbling around.
Yes, hopefully not for much longer.
Much longer isn't that much?
Well, I go tomorrow and get an X-ray and then another plan and hopefully... Tomorrow's been five weeks and he said he wants me in a regular, she within seven to eight weeks, so two to three weeks.
Dead close.
Yes. Is this evidence we want in this?
Yeah, it's signature on it or whatever.
Yeah.
It's Carter's fault we didn't sign it.
We decided, we did vote code.
Uh, Tammy didn't record anything in the minutes, so it didn't have...
Someone voted for you, but it's fine.
What did I record in the minutes?
It was new.
Did I miss something?
Unimportant information.
Okay, Derek, give me another pot of coffee.
Oh, great.
It's nine o'clock, go ahead Derek.
Are they ready?
Are they ready?
Meeting hasn't started yet.
Okay.
Who's meeting, is it?
We have discussion decision RenewGov software.
That's the company we use.
Oh, I understand.
That we're not supposed to do anymore.
Yes, correct, they're, they're the hopes, yep.
You said this might be twenty minutes or so?
Twenty minutes to half hour, I think it's probably.
Are other counties joining too, or?
That's what we're gonna talk about today.
I meant, are they gonna be on the call, is what I meant.
Oh, uh, no.
Okay.
What's your oldest son, I'm gonna pass him on.
Sure, well, I got it on the landing.
She's got her own.
I got my own.
Understood, maybe, so...
Morning.
Yeah.
Can you hear us okay, guys? Can you hear us okay?
Can you hear you?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, um, we're talking with RenewGov this morning. Uh-huh. These guys are a competitor to Solutions. We had a subcontract with them for support, to support the Solutions product. We've had a number of conversations about that. And I've asked these gentlemen to join us today to do kind of a meet and greet, talk about what they're doing in Iowa and what options they'll have moving forward, so... Sean, do you wanna take it away from there?
Yeah, yeah, sure, I follow them, I'm actually in a faculty's office here in Tennessee at the management stuff. Um, getting going, support on the new software, the latest stuff, so, um... But I appreciate you guys having us today, um, I'm Sean and I've got John here, uh, doing N P. We are both owners of RenewGov, or RenewGov is part of, and then John, our company as well, team consulting. So, yeah, as, uh, as some of you guys are aware, we kind of started out by, uh, exploring opportunities in Iowa. And immediately started hearing all the, the pain points and horror stories that were going on with the port, so that led us to what can we do to help people immediately? And, uh, you know, so we went out, found some people that could help and started providing some very hardy support, um, for the existing employees and now, you know, the... And as things keep going, they feedback there was a lot of interest in building employees for Iowa, um, to replace the existing employees and being software, so... That is, uh, kind of the, the brief story there, so, you know, let John come in, we'll, you know, do some more introduction there. If, if you want, John, to do your, so, and talk about the history of Cam Consulting, that's really gonna weigh a lot of the, the, the software and things that's gonna happen and to be built from, so...
Yeah, and I, I don't know if you guys are hearing that echo, but I'm hearing a pretty bad echo from Sean, I'm not sure if that's, uh...
I'll be, let you talk, we'll see.
Okay, yeah, is that better? Yeah, so I'm, I'm John Westrop, I, uh, with, I'm with TM Consulting, uh, we are part of the, the RenewGov Solutions, uh, company, um, partners with Sean. Um, you know, he's kind of our processing guy on, on RenewGov and support and, uh, so, yeah, just a brief history of our company. We started back in ninety-seven, the original owner, a TM Consulting guy named Tom Martin, started writing code in his home here in Enid, Oklahoma, for Garco County, uh, for the Garco County Treasurer. Long story, but, yeah, just knew the treasurer's son and through those connections, I was hearing that there was a lot of pain in the office and that they were wishing they had a better software solution and so... Tom started writing code and word got out that he was pretty good at what he did and before he knew it, he was getting just random calls from counties saying, hey, we want you to come show us what you got. And, uh, that's how it got started and he got really busy really quickly, came to campus where I was graduating in the year two thousand at the University of Oklahoma to interview me and, um... I just felt like maybe this was something that, that could take hold and so we, uh, we decided to, to partner and see what we could do in Oklahoma and... Twenty-five years later, um, here I am, I bought Tom out in twenty twenty and, um, started working with him when we had about seven or eight counties signed up. And now we have, uh, seventy-six of the seventy-seven, um, but it's, it's been a slow, steady growth, you know, it's, it's been, you know, twenty-five years that we just kind of slowly made our way through the state of Oklahoma. We've not tried to, to outpace ourselves, we just kind of take what we can in stride and we've grown it to, uh, to a pretty, pretty successful company here in Oklahoma and I just, you know, I found myself in a place where I was starting to consider what growth would look like. You know, we, we felt like, obviously, we had, we'd kind of taken over Oklahoma and the treasurer's offices and we have some opportunities here still in Oklahoma, but, uh, I felt like maybe, you know, our, our, our niche, you know, just kind of what we specialized in could be useful in other states. And, uh, gosh, it wasn't too long, um, after I really started thinking about what that would look like, um, that I was contacted by Mark Paget, who is one of the owners alongside myself and, uh, and Sean. Um, about considering a partnership with him to take our software into other states. And so, yeah, after a lot of thought and prayer on that, I, I just felt like, you know what, this is something that could be a good, a good thing and, and, uh, we decided to do it and, and here we are. Just through connections we have, uh, some folks we know in Iowa, we, we've heard that, uh, that you guys are, are looking, or at least hoping that your situation will improve with solutions. And I'm not sure, you know, what the status is currently, but, uh, but I do know that, that we, we have built our company on customer support. We, early on, we were up against some, some really big companies, Manitron, C P C S, Terescan, uh, few others that were, you know, nationwide and some international companies. Um, and what we saw is they, they had decent technology, but their customer support was terrible. They might have a good rep that would come and work for a while and the counties would get to know them and it would be great. And then that representative would, would take another job somewhere else, but just for the most part, these companies don't pay or support people very well, they're not treated very well, so they're looking to climb the ladder. And so the counties would, you know, they would have a great experience with, with the rep and, you know, because he or she was good, they would have other opportunities in other markets or in other companies, or even in their own company to move up and they, they would be gone quickly, so... Uh, there's just a lot of inconsistency, um, just a lot of, you know, our counties training, uh, the people who were supposed to be there to support them. You know, so it was just a really dysfunctional situation. And Tom and I were small, we were agile and, you know, they knew if they called us, they were going to get a software developer to help them, um, cause we both broke code and so, um... Yeah, we were able to quickly help people, efficiently help people, as we grew, we started adding guys to help us, um, to the team and now we have a, you know, a larger team. But we have not, uh, we have not relented on the customer support side, I, I tell my guys, you know, the, the number one thing that will get you in trouble, um, in this company is if you mistreat our customers, like... We, we, we treat them the way we want to be treated, um, when someone calls you, that means they need you and they know you have knowledge that they do not have and we're not, we're not going to take advantage of that, we're not going to talk down to people like we're going to help people. And, uh, and honestly, I've only had to say that once to all my guys, you know, they, because I try to hire people that I, that I have a good feeling about as far as that goes, you know, just their ability to work with people and support people and... We've got a great team and I hear that, you know, in Iowa, that's really the, the main thing that might be lacking is, is customer support, so... We've, uh, we've started, you know, exploring options with counties, we've got, um, three contracts signed, uh, with, with three of the, the counties there in Iowa, I think it's Pocahontas, Adams and plus the third one, Sean, uh, drawing a blank. Um. Adams, I mean, yeah, Adam, Pocahontas was the latest county. Anyway, we, we have several to queue who are considering it, so it's kind of, sometimes I forget which ones have actually signed. But, I mean, once we get up to, to six counties, um, we feel like we're gonna have what we need to get started. Um, and we plan to write, um, software for all the offices in Iowa at the county government level. Um, and we feel like we've got some really, really good people. We have some folks that used to work for Solutions, um, some chief developers that, uh, are willing to partner with us to make sure we understand all the requirements and how the data flows, all the integrations we have to make. Um, it's, it's really incredible. If you could choose, you know, two or three of the best people in your state that could partner with us in this project, I think we, we have them. So, um, it's, it's really kind of unbelievable how, how the team's coming together. But, um, a lot of positive momentum. Uh, we know what we're doing. We've been building software, custom software. And I'm talking full stack, like, from scratch, from the ground up. We've been building software for twenty-five years. Not a lot of companies want to do that. Um, it's hard, but we feel like we, we figured out, um, our pace and, and, and we, we feel like we're pretty good at it. Um, we've had a lot of experience here in Oklahoma. Um, just now rolling out kind of the last phase of a cloud-based system that we've designed and developed here. Um, excited about that. All of our counties are super excited about it. It's been, it's been a great transition, so. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's kind of our story. Um, any, any questions?
Montgomery, Montgomery and, and I have to do Pocahontas.
Yeah, Montgomery, that's right, yeah. So, yeah, any, any questions for me as far?
Yep, so, so two things come to mind is, once you get those six counties, what does the timeframe look like for you guys? And then, can you give us an update on the RFP status? I haven't talked to those folks in a couple of weeks. So, if you're able to share, great. If you're not, that's okay too. I can give the board an update in a couple of weeks when we hear more back on that, so.
Uh, so, initially, you know, we, we said two to three years is what it would probably take us to build a complete system. There's possibility that, uh, that could happen sooner. I, I don't, you know, it's a little early to make promises, but as you guys have probably heard in the news, um, the world of AI is rapidly changing. Um, and for software developers, um, it's, I mean, it's providing tools for us that, I think, you know, five, ten years ago, we would have been like, no way. And, uh, and now it's like, wow. It's, it's real and, and it really does. I mean, we can build a lot of base code really quickly. Um, so I do feel like some of the tools we have at our disposal will help us to bring a product to market more quickly. Um, we're seeing it even in the, in putting final touches on this Oklahoma system, although that's kind of, that is the phase where AI is not quite as helpful as once you get all the foundation laid and the initial framework built and you're starting to go in to modify and make the custom changes. I mean, that, that requires software engineers. So, we're in a phase where we can't really truly realize the impact that we have, um, from these tools. But building software for, for a new state from the ground up, we're going to see, I think, a pretty, pretty big impact there. So, um, yeah, two to three years is what we're saying. Um, could be faster than that. We will try to get it done as soon as, if we can get it done in one year, we will. We're, we're not going to straighten it out. We, we want to deliver product to you guys as soon as possible because we feel the pain. So, um, yeah, on paper, it's two to three years. So, that's, that's kind of the expectation we want to set. Uh, as far as the ISAC guys and just the RFP, I have not heard. Um, I, last I heard is they're going to choose two vendors, um, to make, kind of to make the final cut. And then they're going to do interviews with those vendors. And then we'll, you know, we've already kind of done an interview and done a demo for those guys, uh, for a group of, of Iowa officials. I'm not sure if you guys were part of that or not, but, um, it's, I think it's going to be kind of similar to what we've done already. Um, we're confident that we can be a great partner, um, with ISAC and with the counties in Iowa. I mean, it, it, it's so, it's eerily similar to what we're doing here in Oklahoma. Um, there's really not a lot of difference. Oklahoma does not have an ISAC-type organization that's, you know, well, they do, it's just not official. Um, they do have a nucleus, a core nucleus of, of elected officials and people who are invested in county government, who, who are really the ones that make, you know, a lot of decisions and help the counties make decisions about technology and, and legislation, things like that. They influence legislation. But I think, right, we, we are very used to this format. Um, we're excited about the thought of being able to partner, um, with counties in Iowa and with ISAC as well. Uh, so, yeah, I, we're, we're, you know, we're hopeful and, uh, optimistic, but no, we haven't heard, I think that's, I mean, Sean, have you heard anything else besides what I've said?
No, I mean, I haven't heard anything more than we should know something. I guess there were some deadlines on their side this Friday.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't mean quickly, I know that. I just haven't talked to those folks in a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, no, nothing I've really, uh, no more details that I've, I've heard other than that.
Do you guys have questions for these guys? Concerns, comments, input? Anything? Not everybody all at once.
Another detail that you guys might care about, we, we do have several guys now working, we're not a big company. We're still, we're still considered a small, a small company, but we do have, um, just on my team here for Oklahoma, you know, I've got six people, um, to help me and they're all very technically advanced. So, we don't really have, um, anyone at the intro level, um, supporting our software. Most of these guys are familiar with, at the very least, database management. Um, and some are familiar with, with coding. Um, I'd say four of us are, have a background in software engineering. So, um, that's what we shoot for. We feel like if we, if we get qualified to support people, we have people that, you know, some would say are overqualified. Um, they come into a culture that I think they appreciate, that they like, and it is technically challenging. So, they stay challenged with, with new problems to solve and, and new updates to implement and things to think through with our customers. And, um, it's fun. Um, and we have, we have resources. We use resources, um, onshore in some, offshore when needed. Um, you kind of have to do that in this day and age. Uh, or you'll fall behind. But, uh, we have, we have access to resources that are unique to a company our size. Um, our tech stack, what we're actually coding in, um, I'll spare you guys the, the, the language, but, um, it's very advanced. Um, and we're, we're probably, I've not seen actually a competitor system, and I'm talking, you know, the big boys. I've, I've not seen a system, um, that technology-wise compares to what we have. Um, we are on the very leading edge in technology. So, I feel like the system that we would design and develop for you guys would, would not need a major update for probably two decades.
Um, yeah, I got a question for you. This is Kyle Stecker here. Um, just from your current customer base in Oklahoma, um, do you have any, I guess, statistics or targets in mind of like timeframes as far as resolving support tickets? I'm sure there's probably things down there that are more time-sensitive than others as we would have as well. But, um, from something that's super critical, time-sensitive today or tomorrow versus something that could be done as soon as possible, but not urgent, like what kind of timeframe range or what do you target for resolving support tickets?
Yeah, so, just your standard day-to-day phone calls where, you know, someone just needs help in understanding how to do what they need to do in the system. Um, I would say more than fifty percent of the time, do you think, we, we answer immediately. And if we don't, if we're not able to take a call, it's usually within three to five minutes you'll get a call back. And that's just, that's just day-to-day support. When it comes to software updates, if something is urgent, um, depending on what time we, we get the memo or get the call, it may be done that same day. Normally, it's done the next day if we consider it urgent. Um, if it's priority, it might be three to five days, depending on what we have in queue. If it's, if there's not anything in the queue and it's priority, it's gonna be done, it's gonna be treated like it's urgent, like it will, it will move up to the proper list. So, for instance, if there's, you know, uh, a bug that's impacting, maybe a regression, like a, a daily report that you run to balance your office and maybe an, an update was, was pushed out that, they caused a regression in that daily report, so it's not working. If we, if we hear something like that, like we drop everything and we fix it. Because we realize that this is something that you run daily. It impacts your office. You've gotta have it to balance or, you know, whatever. Um, and we get it fixed. Um, so, yeah, there's, this is not, the stuff is, it's urgent. There's not a lot of wait time. We have a great relationship with our, with our state auditor's office here in Oklahoma, the, the, the office that actually audits our counties. Um, and many times they'll give us a heads up if legislation is passed and something is coming down the pipe. It's going to impact our software and we'll have it done before, before it's even required to be in use. So, for instance, legislation that, that will be, you know, in effect in the fall. Um, if we know about it today, it will be, it will be ready to go in the fall. Um, in fact, there, there's not been, and I'm not, I, I mean, I'm being truthful. Like, there's not been any legislation that's passed that's impacted our software that we have not gotten ahead of in Oklahoma for the last twenty-five years. So, um, we know it's a serious thing. It's a legal thing and it puts you guys in a bind if, if we don't take care of business on that front.
When our employees call for support or, or contact you for support, do they have to send an email or leave a voicemail to even get a ticket opened to get in touch with you guys?
No, I mean, normally you're gonna, you're gonna, normally the, we're gonna answer the phone. And I would say, um, unless it's, now, during our really, really busy seasons, which we just, we just came out of one rapid fiscal year, started in July one in Oklahoma. So, there's, there's a, a high concentration of phone calls sometimes because you've got new folks in the office that don't know what to do. And, you know, we do have user guides. We have helpful tools that are built into our software. But some folks, you know, if they have a phone number, they're, they're gonna call the phone number. They're not gonna look at the, uh, but I get that. So, we might, you know, we might get a, an onslaught of calls where, you know, maybe at the most, you might have to wait fifteen minutes, twenty minutes to get a call back. Um, but that's, that's worst-case scenario, guys. I mean, it's normally in just the day-to-day, like ninety percent of the time, we're going to answer when you call. Uh, but if we don't, we're gonna call you right back. Like, it's gonna be like, we, we've got a call in the queue, maybe a couple of calls ahead of you, and it's gonna be five, ten minutes and you're gonna get a call back.
Excellent. All right, you guys got anything else? Good for mine, standpoint. All right, well, thank you, guys. I appreciate you jumping on today and giving us a rundown, so. Um, I'm sure we'll have more conversations in the future, so, thank you.
No, look, if you wanna see the software or you need some more detail, I'd be happy to provide that for you.
Yeah, well, we're good for right now, so, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. To them.
Thank you, guys. I don't have anything else. I just want to give you an update on.
So, I, uh, what's the relationship between Sean and John?
One's an owner and one is a, uh, COO, I think, or CEO. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I have to look.
So, the, the Sean owns John now?
I think Sean is the COO or CEO.
So, he works for John's company?
I believe so, yes.
But he does that in Tennessee?
I, I.
What I understood, yeah.
So, 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 but right now, everything they do is in Oklahoma?
As far as customers or as far as employees?
I don't care whether the employees.
Uh, customers, yes, I believe that is correct.
They wanna move into Iowa?
Yes.
And, and this would supplant totally Solutions?
It would be a competitor to Solutions, yes.
And, and you would consider making that leap of faith?
Absolutely. But what we've gotten from their three employees and the level of support we've gotten from those three employees where we call, they instantly get on and give us support, a hundred percent better than Solutions.
They have it passed. We don't do anything with them now.
We can't do anything with them now, no.
Um, did they put in a bid for the state contract?
They are working on the RFP for the ISAC committee that's going forward, so, yes, they are included in that. So, if they are awarded that, they will move forward much quicker than if they just get six counties on board, so.
When they say they signed on, how, how, I mean, how did those counties sign on?
Is that like a letter of intent, kind of?
I would say a letter of intent with a financial commitment, yes.
True.
So, these support tickets are, I'm, correct my terminology, when you have a problem with, with Solutions, you, you don't have a problem with these people. These people help you solve a problem with Solutions, right? Is that correct?
They did.
They did.
They did.
I understand that. I understand that.
Yes.
So, so, so the Solutions product's been around for a number of years?
Correct. Long time.
Excuse my.
Twenty years, maybe.
Excuse my naive here, but, but, but why is there a problem with that? Why? I mean, you would think almost any situation that could come up would have come up. I don't, I don't understand. Is there, like, that's.
Well, the code is being updated all the time. So, the statute says a change at the state level require coding changes. So, it's not a static product. It's not one and done. It's a product that's constantly being updated.
And Howard, the problem started when they were bought out by Harris. So, they were a, a smaller company and then Harris bought them out and that's when the problem started.
Before that, you didn't have many support issues.
And I didn't before that, no.
No, their customer support was fabulous.
They were, they were small and local.
Right, I understand, but I, I, I don't understand why, I, I know there, there's a problem with everything, but if you've been using a system for twenty years and it's been out there twenty years, you know, and I, I think you're saying Harris bought them out fairly recently.
Yeah.
I, I'm just amazed that, that there, there are issues at any time. I understand it's not a static product, but.
I think the issues are in their customer support because when Harris bought them out, a lot of the employees left. So, now they're hiring new employees that don't know the answers to things, so we're not getting the support we need.
I think, I think what I would compare it to, which hopefully will be a little easier to wrap your head around is, is like John Deere tractors should have been around for decades and decades and decades. And then if, if all the mechanics leave at your local dealership, doesn't mean there's a crazy problem with the manufacturing or the distribution or any of that. It's that you can't get your normal routine maintenance and even your complex maintenance. You don't have someone there to solve that, which would have been.
I, I, I do understand all that. I, I, I followed that. I followed the Harris bought them out and things changed. And what, and I understand that things are, laws are changing, something new comes out of the way and it has to be upgraded. But, but we're, I don't know how many counties in Iowa are on Solutions, but a lot of them, right?
Thirty some.
Thirty, so thirty, okay.
The alternative is Tyler.
Correct, which is more expensive.
And has just as many problems.
And in the past has not been.
That's the thing I can't get my head around. Why either of them have problems? I, he, he.
Seriously, great question, Howard. I, a hundred percent agree with you.
I, I.
Yeah, why?
Yeah, I, it just doesn't, you know, if it's a product that's basically been out there, I don't, you, you'd think most of the situation would have happened. They've, they've been corrected. I, if, if they're having problems with something that's twenty years old, you know, uh, it's scary to change too, but somebody, somebody's got it.
It is scary to change.
I mean, there's, yeah, and I, I could, I could understand all that. I mean, it's scary to change a lot of things, but things change whether we want them to or not, or whether we like that they change or not. It happens every day, so, I guess, from a standpoint of, I mean, you could look at anything, technology based in the last ten, fifteen, twenty years, the changes on the background in those systems are tremendous. So, if you don't have somebody that's keeping up on that and maintaining things and improving them, um, and to be quite honest, with a priority on customer service, it, it's gonna fall apart no matter how many years it's been in the works.
I, I, I did hear, I also heard his comment about if you, if you got into this, you wouldn't have to do it for twenty years. Wanna bet. Things move pretty fast these days.
There's no guarantee.
I don't, I don't, I don't know about the twenty years, but I think what he was probably, and I didn't, I didn't ask to clarify this, but I think what he's probably referring to is. Major overhauls of the system. I mean, you're gonna have tweaks and modifications every single day, but I think what he was probably referring to is a whole. Big starting from scratch piece rather than, um, minor modifications as you go. And. I'm just shooting from what I got out of that, but.
It's unfortunate we even have to have this conversation.
I understand, but.
Okay, anything else for me, guys?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're up to a little drainage here. Discussion decision to accept petition for improvement on DD eighty, sections twenty-eight and twenty-nine, appoint an engineer.
And this is Inlet Yard Township.
Yep.
So this has been, um, we've had this, I've had discussions with the farm manager and tenant who farms it for. Couple of years now, probably going on three plus to be honest, but, um. It, this petition outlines the request for improvement on two different drains. They are both in DD eighty. The one in section twenty-nine is lateral seventy and the one in section twenty-eight is lateral ten. Um, so. By the code of Iowa and the process, we would need to appoint engineer for any improvement project. So.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Cause I'm not used to doing petitions. There, on the backside, and maybe it doesn't mean anything anymore, there is a, a spot for a petition and bond. And that's not filled out. Do they need to have a bond before this is filed?
I don't believe we've ever had a bond for an improvement request.
Okay, just, just making sure, don't miss something, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, um, so, I guess.
So how many, how many signatures does it take to get something like this going? Just to?
One, one owner is the requirement. It, it can't be a tenant. It has to be someone with an ownership stake in the district, but it only requires one.
So then you're, you're, you're gonna, they can, they can initiate an action to hire this engineer and everything?
As, as the board, we initiate the action as the trustees of the district, but. Any landowner can request improvement. Then it goes through. I guess I call it the steps in the process, but you send it to an engineer, they do kind of their. Overview and evaluation. They'll come back with a report. And sometimes actually we've done a informational meeting in between to give extra information to people, which I have seen a lot of benefits from. But usually you can go through the evaluation phase. They look at the acres, the capacities. They'll get some elevation shots to see what they've got to work with. And do like. Basic preliminary designs to see what's even possible, whether you have room for a sixty inch pipe or whether you have room for a twenty-four or whatever. So then they come back with, um, their report. Then that is the rest of the landowners in the district. That's their opportunity to object and remonstrance. And we've walked through that a little bit with. Uh, recently with D four lap eleven and that type of stuff. So this is the front end of that process.
To approve this year, is this gonna cost twenty or thirty thousand dollars, twenty or fifty thousand dollars, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars?
Ten to thirty.
You have no idea how many acres you're spreading that over?
Uh, I don't off the top of my head. I mean, we have, we have lists of the current schedules. Um, I didn't get those acres right now, but we would have that. In auditor's office of what those current schedules outline.
And you've been dealing with this for two or three years. Do you have a feel for the surround, surrounding landowners?
Um, I have, I can't say I've talked to a lot of the other landowners around there, but what I can say is just. Briefly looking at the overview of the land, I think they have more than thirty percent of the acres on their own.
Okay.
So. On that front is probably remonstrance proof. Um, so. I guess whether the rest are supportive or not, I mean. I'm not trying to say just shoving something down everybody's throat, but they have a lot of acres that are impacted. So they have a fair bit of stake in the.
Okay.
In the game. And they'll pay a fair bit of the bill too.
Yep, yep, understand. Thank you.
But.
Kyle, what lats did you say it was?
It would be, I'm gonna pull up my map just to double check. So lateral seventy would be the one that goes through section twenty-nine. And then lateral ten, um, would be in twenty-eight, which there's other laterals off of that, but those would be the two main lines.
Thank you.
Yep. And I mean, just from a conversation standpoint and stuff, um, with the tenant and the farm manager. And my conversations, Tyler has been involved in some of these conversations as far as giving them a little bit of. Basic understanding of the process and how some of that stuff work. So. He is aware of this project as well and has just kind of helped out along the way to give them some information, but. If there's not any other questions, I'd make a motion to approve this or accept the petition and appoint Boldman Bank as engineer.
Okay, we have a motion I second. Anyone want to second that? Okay, second by Haas. Discussion on Kyle's motion. And if no discussion, then all in favor of approving, please say, or excuse me, of appointing an engineer for the project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
You guys will get to see one first.
Yeah, that looks good.
Which will be a little easier to wrap your head around.
Well, you just, yeah.
I doubt it. We are up to, you know. I understand it only takes one side and, and. And if more than thirty percent wanted it, have.
Five acres. Yep. So for remonstrance, which is stopping the project, that's the term that's in the code. To stop it, you need fifty percent of the owners by population. So like a husband and wife would be two, or if you got. Four siblings that share a wife. With population wise, yep. If you got four siblings that own a piece that their parents gave them or whatever, that would be four for population.
If four siblings own a, own a.
The same piece of ground.
A court or, yeah, it's either four or they one.
That gets a little more technical. I don't think we've ever come down that close on it. But like. Like there's one we had a remonstrance on that was met in the city. It went on the edge of the city of Lakota. So every single house.
Sure.
You have all those different parcels. So you have to meet by population and about seventy percent of the acres. So the footside of that is thirty percent.
Yep.
If you have thirty-one percent of the acres, it's impossible, that's supportive, it's impossible to get a remonstrance.
Okay.
Just numbered by.
All right.
Yep.
Thanks.
Good question. It's a lot of technicalities to understand.
Okay, uh, morning Doug.
Yeah, good morning again.
And doesn't look like we have any right of way today.
That is correct. No right of way.
So, I guess go ahead with discussion then.
Yeah, just to let you know, Matthew with resurfacing. Uh, they have completed resurfacing on B sixty-three and they have shouldered some of that road last week. Um, it's going to probably be a couple of weeks before they get a shoulder recruit in there to finish that up. They're kind of gonna get a crew when they get more resurfacing completed. On B fifty-five, they are resurfacing right now. They're putting on that immediate, intermediate lift and they will be putting a final on after that. All whitening's completed on P thirty and once B fifty-five resurfacing is done, they'll move on to that P thirty job. So they're moving along. Uh, fighting weather just a little bit, but, uh, they are making progress. The bridge north of Sexton, the north and the south pier pile are driven now, so they're preparing to pour caps. Micro-surfacing, they have completed between Iowa nine and A forty-two and they're working on, uh, P thirty, excuse me, P thirty between Iowa nine and A forty-two. They're working on P thirty between B nineteen and A forty-two right now. DD four lap forty crossing Seventieth Avenue. They were hoping to do that yesterday. However, the rain up in that area. Uh, delayed that and it's even delaying today. So that'll be taking place sometime, I would think this week. Uh, we are advertising, reviewing applications for, uh, an engineering aid in the engineer's office and. Uh, the operator at the Albona shop, uh, visiting with the county attorney's office and, uh. Sheriff's office gets things prepared to start removing, uh. Removing the junk at the junkyard corner. There is no progress being made.
Yeah, that's, that's in pretty bad shape right now.
So we'll get that taken care of. Working on the secondary road annual report, get that started here with the fiscal year ending. Uh, as far as Waste Management Association, we do have a comp plan, uh, meeting on July twenty-nine. I'll be getting some. Uh, emails out to everybody, get a, get that meeting and agenda and all. And down to the south of the courthouse where there's recycling containers for rural residents. There's an awful lot of construction going on there. Um. We have seen, uh, slowing of those containers being filled. Uh, with the construction, it's making it difficult for, uh, our own equipment to go in and pick up those boxes. And get those switched out. Uh, depending on how this week goes. If we have to, we're just gonna pull all the, all the boxes until some construction finishes around that intersection. And if we do that, we'll put up some signs and we'll also get a radio announcement. But if you hear something. Of those containers not being placed there, it's because of the adjacent street construction.
Have you talked to the city at all about moving those to a temporary location?
I've not. I would rather just completely.
Yeah, it's, it'd be too hard to let people know where they.
Right. I'd rather just, I mean, I don't think in a week's amount of time, I would think that they're gonna be working there. I, I don't know what the construction. I haven't even talked to the city as far as construction plan, Josh. So.
I don't think it's supposed to be done until September.
I, I didn't say.
Yeah, well, it's just.
It's gonna be a long time to do without recycling containers.
Well, right now it's that intersection. They were, they had their equipment there and they had some trucks parked in there and. It's just, uh, it's just when they're adjacent to McGregor.
Okay.
So they'll be going up to State Street and, and all. So it's just wild. There's just so much business going on there in construction. And then with self-insurance, taking care of some of the end of fiscal year reports for self-insurance, it's a little more than there. So. That's all that I have.
Um, for P thirty from nine to A forty-two, is that completely done or is there more they're coming back for?
No, that is completed, yes.
I was gonna say, that looks nice.
Good. I haven't had a chance to drive the whole road as one has been completed. I've.
I have been.
I've driven some of the, uh, completed work, but I'm happy with it. We still have to paint it, but we're just going to. Wait, we have no center line of paint. Uh, we're waiting until, uh, um, our painter comes in to do that.
How thick would that stuff on top be?
Oh, I'd say somewhere around three eights to a quarter.
Okay.
So. Three eights of an inch to a quarter, maybe somewhere.
Very good.
All right.
Thanks, Doug.
You bet. Thank you.
Discussion with county auditor.
Okay. Next week, on the fifteenth, at six thirty, we have that DD forty cleanout informational meeting in Whittamore at the Legion. So six thirty for that.
Is that the Legion?
Yes.
I forgot what that.
The Legion Hall.
The Legion.
That'll be on our agenda, right?
Yes, it'll be on the agenda, yeah. Yep, it'll be on the agenda. Then we just have, um. Well, I need to contact Humboldt County. I have to put on the agenda for the, um, MOU between us and Humboldt County. But I haven't heard anything from them, so I need to double check that. But I do have a note on that. And then we just have our. Our regular other stuff so far, but you know how that can change. Don't forget, if you're able to attend Thursday, is our department head meeting at nine o'clock. And that is all I have, unless you have.
Hopefully be talking about the handbook?
Handbook, yes. Yes. Handbook.
Okay.
And that'll be on our agenda too.
Great.
It is on the agenda today.
No, I mean for, oh, yeah.
What's on our agenda?
The department.
Oh, yes, yep, yep, okay. Hey, Howard, do you have any meetings?
Nothing.
Nothing? Amber?
I didn't have anything either.
Okay, Kyle, making it easy?
I don't think I had any meetings, but I've definitely been busy. Uh, but I did forward out to everyone the stuff from FEMA. Uh, long story short, the state is fully supporting and recommending everything that we turned in originally. There are three DI's that were not completed, totals like thirty some thousand. Um, and we, we're not asking for funds for those anyway. So, um.
Do I need to do anything with that, Kyle, or that's just information?
No, that was, that was information they basically copied us on so that, on when they sent that to region seven to FEMA. So that's the state sending it to the feds.
But I can print that out and put it in the file or don't need to or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it can be in file, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep. It's just information known for us, but, um.
Well, it'll help me remember later on because I probably won't.
Yeah, and I believe they have ninety days to respond to that. So.
FEMA does?
FEMA has ninety days. So I mean. Within three months, we should have some answer and plan it. I mean, if they accept it, it'll be quick and simple. If they don't, we'll have to deal with that from there. But the state is fully supporting what we turned in. So.
Okay.
That's.
Very good.
If they don't, if they say they don't approve it, what, what the?
I believe.
Then is it done? We can't do it anymore?
No, there's, no, there's a couple of other steps. I know there's at least another step where it could go to, um. I believe it's out to Washington DC to FEMA's off headquarters out there. Um. And I think there's some other options as well, but I would not.
I don't have any.
Ready and well-versed to answer all that today, but I do know there are other steps. Um, so. I mean, it's, it's a significant impact either way, but I guess I feel pretty confident that we provided them. Or did our, did our best to provide them the information along the way. And that's heavily referenced with the engineer's report that was sent to them back in. Twenty twenty, um, long before a shovel ever hit the ground. And that estimate was higher than our final total cost. So. Based on that engineer's report, which they were provided, there actually would have been a underrun on costs rather than an overrun on costs, but they did not use. They didn't use the things that we provided and, um, hindsight, looking back, we probably. Could have tried to focus or push on the paperwork a little more at that time, but I mean. There was a lot of learning, the FEMA processes and stuff back then and a lot of chaos with FEMA itself because we went through. FEMA representative after FEMA representative after FEMA representative for that. I think we had five or six PDMGs that I dealt with. So. It was kind of a revolving door at FEMA, um, at the time.
Like some of these comments, like in which document am I in?
The ones that are highlighted there would have been things that they referenced in the state's response. So.
So yeah, so like this reference, um, so where's the state response? Like here's this comment to that.
No, it's a, it's in a whole different document.
Okay, so.
So that's, that's the determination memo, but the state response, I think, is eleven pages.
Okay, so I just need to write printables off and look at them.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, so I just need to try to print both off and look at them and what this because.
And they they respond to, I mean.
Cause I'm just looking at the one where the eight, ten and twenty four inch were part of the current contract. Only the eighteen inch was included in the contract? Oh, yeah, so eighteen inch was included in the contract, but we evidently must have.
So that that would have been.
Eighteen, ten and twenty four?
That would have been for the pipe, the outlet pipes going into the ditch. So they they only recorded an eighteen or whatever. But our engineer's report that was provided to them would have had estimated quantities that would have been the whole whole list. So. I mean, yeah, we could. If you have this document, which is eleven pages here, it starts like that. And this is the state appeal recommendation. So, yeah, if you correlate that side by side with the other one that was highlighted. You can kind of see their responses in regards to what FEMA had said previously. So it it lays it out pretty clear, but I mean, there's.
The one that's eleven pages does.
Yep. But there's multiple places where. I mean, I'll I'll find a couple to pick out here. But. They they kind of lay out the background and then they lay out issues and then they lay out their analysis. And. Here, I mean. Like the three DIs, this is on page five, it says the three DIs FEMA cites as incomplete. Were identified as clerical error that should have been withdrawn. No invoices were submitted and we're not requesting reimbursement for those totaling thirty two thousand five oh one. But then right above that, it says FEMA's claims that McCarty's costs were not allocated is incorrect. The spreadsheet clearly links McCarty's one point three six million dollar contract to the following DIs. All of which were under county's engineering supervision and part of the main open ditch mitigation statement of work. And then they've got their conclusions and analysis and it references. It references FEMA's own policies multiple times. Yeah, I guess it's, there's a lot of information in there, but. It says, here's one, like page seven. FEMA's cost reasonableness analysis failed to incorporate the applicant's certified engineer's estimate submitted. September twenty first, twenty twenty, prior to bidding. The estimate totaled one million eight hundred ninety eight thousand dollars and was prepared in accordance with. Their their own policies and I will quote chapter four sixty eight. Instead FEMA's obligation was different than that. So. It actually would have been a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar under run against the certified engineer's projection. And then FEMA's exclusion of the applicant certified engineering estimate represents a significant procedural oversight for several reasons. And then they have four bullets under that. And then at the bottom of those four bullet points, it says FEMA's failure to incorporate the applicant certified engineer's. Estimate is inconsistent with established FEMA guidance and policy outlined in that stuff, which specifically states the following. And in that, it says FEMA is directed to use the applicant's cost estimate when specified criteria criteria is met. And it says all of which the applicant satisfied. So. I mean. Procedurally, there's. There's things that could have and should have been done differently on their side of the equation. I guess from the facts of the situation and all that, I'm. I'm pretty confident we did, or I did what was, and the engineers, I mean, all all of us that were working on it did. The best we could in compliance with the state law and in compliance with what we were told at the time, so. And that includes guidance from FEMA, so. Yeah, I. Hopefully it is a simple process here and they look through, they, yeah, that would be nice too, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, which we should get a check for the state's ten percent relatively soon. But I don't know if we have a hard timeline on that, but.
These projects are fixed roads and the like?
Drainage ditches. This is primarily D D four open ditch, but there's there's some other projects across the county that were also in the same FEMA project.
So the coup d'etat bill, you mean, then?
The landowners or in the case of D D four, there's still a partial outstanding balance on the account. So the landowners are responsible at the end of the day if it comes down to that.
The contractor's been paid?
With warrants, yeah. Contractor, engineer, landowners with crop damages, all that, yep. All those bills have been approved by the board. Just a little update there and, yeah, hopefully we get a positive response sooner. Yeah, any questions for me, feel free to ask.
No, but I'm not trying to skip over, Josh, but before the end of the meeting, can we talk about the D D four and how we're gonna proceed with that? With the questions?
That's fine.
Please.
Yeah.
I don't think I had anything else to mention.
Okay, Josh?
No meetings, we do have that. The county wife breakfast coming up August sixth. Just to check it out about that. It does look like we need R S V P by July seventeen.
I've already R S V P. I'm not gonna be there because I'll be on the state campus, but I already know who else.
You usually can't make a pass at that in four or two, so.
Usually I it might have a reminder on my calendar. I usually have a reminder when I have to R S V P.
Just thought we were not R S V Ping late.
Yeah, I have it on for next week. So but on the fourteenth, I have a reminder to get it if you're gonna be going, so. So I will bring it up at next week's meeting.
Okay. And then tomorrow, I have. The, not have the hazmat meeting, followed by the transportation policy board meeting over in Mason Saturday. Tomorrow afternoon, so.
I had wellness last week. We've got biometric screenings that'll be held August twenty first from six forty five to nine in the morning. Reminder that our insurance offers a discount to Y M C A for single membership. We'll have flyers coming out for the Christmas in July silent auction. Bring items to that. There'll be a farmer's market salad bar luncheon on August fifth. They're planning a float your boat kayaking out of Smith Lake for some time later in August. And then. There'll be a Make It Okay presentation on October thirteenth of this year. Should have been the same presentation that Sadie Becker would have given to the road department if you were there for that. I, Howard, you were there for that, so. We'll meet next in September. That was all for wellness and then coming up on Thursday, I will be at the Veterans Commissioner swearing for that. That's this Thursday. Then otherwise, that's that's all I have as far as, yeah, D D four, how do we want to proceed with that? What were you, was there something you wanted to? Direction or comment that you wanted to make?
No, I just wanna know what the, how the board feels about how we proceed. I mean, I think we need to proceed with more, but I mean.
Well, I mean.
I don't feel like we got anywhere the last time.
We we told them we'd have a meeting on it and so I I think it's only right to have a meeting on it and and fulfill that. It's just a matter of. I I we still don't have a. Answer per se, I mean, we have an answer, but I don't know that the board really concluded on anything when we met last time. As far as how we wanted to answer that. At least told them we'd have a meeting to respond to their requests for the sheet that they had handed out. So, I mean, I can even work on writing something up to get the discussion going. And we can come back and and talk about it. Cause there's so many aspects to D D four and and so many different avenues of the conversation. But I think first, maybe we need to focus on what they requested to begin with. We can have the meeting and answer that. If they have further questions that they want clarification on, I guess. You know, beyond what they were requesting, that's all that's all I'm getting at.
I think we need to come up with a timeline, you know, this happened, this and this is what it cost. This happened, this and what's cost. This amount was assessed to pay for that.
That's kind of what I'm what I'm getting at.
I mean, I think that's what we need to do because that's what they wanna know is is what happened, why are we here? So if we have that timeline with, you know, this is the balance at this time, this is what was assessed, you know, this is what was done here and this is what it cost. And this is, I mean, I think that's what we need.
Yeah, like it's own little little spreadsheet estimate that that outlines everything from.
Much like what the engineer would do in their final report of giving a history of the project. We're kind of looking to do the same type of thing, here's the timeline of why this happened the way it is.
The problem is there's more than one project, you know, you're gonna have to go way back and start with a different project.
I understand that. I understand. Yeah.
Yeah, cause the the big project. Or phase one, right, was two thousand seventeen. And then after.
That was when it was assessed, so it was before.
Right. It was twenty fifteen, wasn't it, for project?
When it started or whatever, so. I think that, yeah, we need to go back that far and somehow work on a spreadsheet. And I think to have at our disposal too, which I'm sure we have, it's just, it's in your office. All the bills associated with each thing, each one of those things. And the big question is the FEMA money and what it went towards. If it went to the older bills, we need to show them that it did do that. You know, and having the answer. I know I haven't reached out to any other counties to ask that question, but I wanna, maybe I will do that today. But can we, when we have a FEMA project, can we just put that money towards that and not towards the older bills? Because I think their big thing is they're paying interest on money that would have been paid by funds paid by FEMA already. So kind of answering, and that's more like a treasurer's office question because they are the ones who put the money towards it. But I'm just trying to find out.
How it's done.
How that's done.
I agree, that's a good.
Because that is a big question that they have. So.
And to make sure that that it's being done the way that it should be done. I mean, ninety nine counties, ninety nine different ways of doing things, I get that. But for landowners and taxpayers, we want to make sure that we're doing it the best way that we can.
Yeah, and even though there's ninety nine different ways of doing things, if we took all the same project and did it. Even if we had our own way of doing things, the ending point should still be the same. You know, it's okay to do things differently, but the endpoint should be consistent.
And and in all reality, I think you're right, and I think it it would be regardless of whether the new bills or old bills get paid. With the exception of the interest rate, because we did change the interest rate between the time periods that we're talking about.
Oh, like it was?
It was it was six percent originally and it's five percent now.
So can you tell me when that happened, so when I'm figuring interest, I'm figuring the right amount? And why did that change?
Are you sure it wasn't five and went to six?
It was six, went to five, that was a board decision, I could get you the time, but yes.
And then I can see what I can find too, but.
I.
You would act to that era, that's what interest rate for, you know, you couldn't get anything anywhere. You could borrow money for four or five percent.
Yeah, it it definitely was six on the original stuff.
Probably getting to the point where we need to go back from five back to.
That that has been discussed recently, I'm not comfortable raising it quite yet because I don't think we're having any issues. Getting warrants bought by banks or whatever else, but, yeah, I mean, it's it's at the other side of the spectrum where.
Moving the other.
When when we dropped it to five, even after that, we potentially could have gone lower at the time. Now the pendulum's swinging back the other direction, so, yeah, I mean, potentially.
Going slower, yeah.
Yeah, could have potentially gone backwards, but that is that is a factor there.
In two thousand twenty four, this audit report. Evidently, there was a re audit report on Cassup County for the period of July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. There must have been a petition. And that has to do with drainage because it was requested as a result of concerns regarding Cassup County Board of Supervisors functions as drainage district trustees. Did that have to do with drainage district four? I mean, I printed it off, but I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing.
Yes, it did.
What? What was the conclusion there when the board got the report? Did they? Did we act on this report at all, not act on it, but did we acknowledge the report like in the board meeting? Or what what did what did the board talk about?
I don't think it was brought into the boardroom at the time, to be honest.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I haven't rubbed it all, but I'm just wanting to know, like, you know, was there anything in here that we should be doing differently? That they might have noted, do you guys remember? Now, like I said, I just need to sit down, read it, I didn't have a chance to read the whole thing, but. It does note something about FEMA here.
How many pages is that?
I don't know, it's like ten, eleven, cause it's written back, ten.
When was Leon hired, was that twenty nineteen? When did he start helping that FEMA?
Leon was actually involved with the projects. So the disaster of twenty nineteen is primarily what I started dealing with. Cause of my time on the board starting in nineteen. But when we had those projects originally, Leon was working for the state of Iowa. So he was actually our point of contact for the state at the time. So he was involved in handling those projects from a different lens. But I don't remember the exact date, but he transitioned from employment at the state to employment with this engineering firm. And is offering his services as a consultant to help with the administrative side of all these projects. And it kind of changed, I mean, he was helping from the state perspective, but it was from a different lens. So now as a consultant, he's. I don't I I don't know different set of words besides helping from a different lens. But when he changed employment is after that sometime, I don't remember if it was. A month or two later, I don't remember the exact timeline, but we engaged him as a consultant on behalf of Cassup County. To help continue and finish the paperwork for those same projects that he was already aware of.
Well, I was just wondering about that because it might be a tool that we use when we're trying to, you know, I. Like I said, I don't know if it has to do with what was actually petition for, but it's the timeframe, so I think we should probably.
Might have her for all of us to look at that. Might have her for all of us to look at that again.
Look at it, yeah. So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it ever came to the boardroom.
I don't remember what, yeah.
Okay.
I remember the radio announcement about it, but.
Yeah, I, I do hear, I do too.
It was in the newspaper, I remember it's in the newspaper, um.
Seth Rob Sands.
Yeah.
Deal, yeah.
Yeah, they put that little notice in there. I did look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, anyway, I just thought it might be a tool that we could use, but, um. So, are, what, what, are we gonna meet again on it, on the DD four stuff, or what, what's gonna happen there, like us before we?
Well, we're gonna have to come up with something to, at least for a conversation. I think for, when we meet again, you know, like, like we're talking about as far as coming up with a timeline or. Something specific to bring to the board so that the board can. Decide what to do with it to present to landowners. That's, that's my feeling on it. That it's something that have to happen outside the boardroom to bring into the boardroom.
Well, yeah, obviously, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I've asked Nick for a few things, uh, and I don't know if that's gonna give me everything I want, but it's a starting point for me, but.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yeah. Is everybody just gonna do their own investigating or to try and come up with what they think or, you know?
Well, I would hope we'd all be working with Tammy on that. As far as the process, but yeah.
Well, uh, well, obviously we have to do that. She has reports, that would be no different than that, but I'm saying, is everybody gonna do their own?
Right, right.
Kind of questions that they have to try and get them answered?
Well. I guess. If we wanted to, we could certainly delegate things out. I mean, we shouldn't all be, or maybe we should.
I think you all should.
Yeah, we, maybe we all should just go, go through the same information, yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely, I think everybody needs to be on the same page and have the same information and.
Right. Yeah, maybe we should. So.
Okay, well, I kind of know what track I'm on, but. I don't know if it's the right track, but I'm on it.
You're on A track.
I'm on A track. But. So, do we have a? Time that, how much time are we gonna give ourselves?
Well.
Time is going quickly.
Yeah.
It's already July.
It is going very quickly.
I'm thinking if we could have a meeting in August, that'd be good. That's before anybody gets busy, yeah.
And maybe in August possibly. Just cause I know I'm.
Yeah, you got a lot fair stuff.
I'm not a little bit, I have a lot of stuff in that.
I mean, if we did something towards the end of August, what's it?
Uh.
Oh, if we did something towards the end of August and it's before everybody gets busy with fall and.
Yeah.
And, no, I, I don't wanna do something in the middle or end of September.
But that's something that, excuse me, that so, uh, we're gonna send something out to all the landowners? Because that's what they wanted, right, a public meeting, so it isn't, is that what we're doing? Are we sending something out, inviting them to come in?
I guess that would be up to if the board wants to do that or not, I.
Okay.
I mean, as far as how we wanna notify them, yeah. I don't know.
Well, you know, we need to keep that in mind before we say what date we're gonna have it because we need so much time to get that ready.
Right. Sure. Yeah, yeah.
In order for them to have that.
Well, could we? As far as step one. Could we do like two weeks from today? That the board comes back and has a discussion just to see where we're at with the process? Coming up with something, or you know, like at least if we're, if we're not ready to talk, then we're not ready to talk, but you know, that's a good goal? Or is that not a?
I think that's a good, I think that's a good goal, I do. I mean, at least to talk about it again, but we didn't.
And hopefully that day decide specifically when the meeting is and how we're gonna.
Yes.
Let people know.
I do think so.
Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yeah. I, I mean, it's reasonable to me, at least it's, uh, because I, I don't think there needs to be silence, you know? I think that it's probably appreciated more that we're, it's on the agenda and we're talking about it instead of just.
Right.
Even if we are doing stuff in the background, it's, it's still nice to have them see that it's not being ignored.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Okay.
July twenty-second, I'll put it on the agenda. I'll just probably put discussion update on petition from DD four, would that be?
Yeah.
That, that works.
But will we make a decision that day on when to have it, or does it? Or we'll talk about when we're gonna do it, maybe have a decision the following week?
Or I can put decision on there too, if you want, either way. I mean, I can put it on and then if you decide to make a decision, it's on there.
Yeah, might as well.
Sure, yeah, just in case we have a.
Okay.
Cause I don't know how much time needs to be had for you guys to put something together to get it to landowners if that's where out we go. So, I wanna make sure you guys have enough time for that.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, well, then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Garmin.
Second.
Second by Wachter. Discussion on adjournment. Not all favors, say hi. Hi, opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned to ten sixteen.